All right, folks, we're going to get started in just one second.
He's gonna go.
There we go. I got my seat.
Okay. So.
All right, I am going to call our Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, November 18th at 6:00 PM. We do have one member remote, so I'm going to just do a roll call. Eric here.
Kim here. Sorry, Missy here.
Kyle Pike here.
Don, I'm right here.
All right, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
All right, we have a few announcements tonight. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's Office. And we say this every, every meeting, for anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website, our website at KingstonMA.gov. Also, check our website for any additional events or notices. And also, just wanted to shout out a public thank you to Larry Iorossi of Iorossi Painting, who has generously donated his time to paint the two machine guns and light poles at the island near the Library for Veterans Day. Last year, they provided the same service and power washed all the stones at the memorials. Any other announcements?
I'll just thank you to everyone who came out and voted this weekend at the special election. The debt exclusion for the partial repair of the school roof passed by a narrow margin. So just thank you for those who came out to vote. I would also say that as we approach budget season, this is the perfect time to join a committee or commission. Finance Committee is seeking three members, so anyone interested in serving on Finance Committee needs to email the moderator, and that's moderator@KingstonMA.gov. And you don't need to be a finance expert, just be willing to look at the budgets and ask questions and, and show up.
Excellent. All right, now, open forum. Is there anybody here who wanted to speak at, at open forum? Go ahead, Will.
I just, I know we are still in the 2025 season, in the year of 2025, but I just wanted to ask you guys to maybe, if possible, can you guys start to look at any more possibilities of doing any more sidewalks on Main Street for the 2026 springtime to fall? I know it's getting very cold out, I'm not going to ask you guys to do any more this season, but I'm just asking, can you guys take a look into the possibility of doing more sidewalks for next year? And then, as well as that, I just want to say thank, I want to say, I hope everyone here has a happy Thanksgiving. I know it's coming up in, in a week, so happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you, Board of Selectmen, for everything you do. I, and I think I speak for the whole town, we are thankful for you guys because everything that you do changes this town for the best.
And I just want to say thank you, Will, for all of your donating, all your time, you're everywhere. And thank you for, for donating all your time. I hope you guys have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Was there anybody in line that wanted to speak, open forum? Doesn't look like it. No? Okay. All right, we're going to take an appointment out of order. We have number four, we have an appointment of a full-time, permanent civil, civil service police officer, Adam Roy.
Number five.
And we have Lieutenant Bateman.
Mr. Ujle. And Mr. Roy.
Good evening, thanks for taking us on the order. Police Department would like to bring a recommendation to, for this candidate to fill an open position that we have right now. Mr. Roy has passed all his backgrounds and necessary items that he had to pass to become a police officer already, so already a full certified police officer within the town of Port Hasse, and he's going to be coming over with us, and I'm sure you guys will be very happy with him. So, that's my short version.
Awesome. Any questions or comments? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Adam Roy as a full-time police officer for the town of Kingston, starting on November 24th, 2025.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye.
Kim, aye. Missy, aye.
Kyle Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Department appreciates it. Of course we can, Will. Shake hands, shake hands. That's it, though. Appreciate it. Thank you guys. Mr. Roy, Kyle Pike.
Well, I'm plugging you. You're there.
Thanks, welcome to the board.
Welcome, it's nice to meet you. It's easy as part of the interview process, right?
Absolutely. All right, now, now we're going to move on to, hold on a second.
Something needs to be muted. Missy, can you mute your computer?
Uh-oh, it's not.
My computer will not turn off. Oh, great, fantastic. Wait, try that.
Yep, that, nope. Sorry, we're having a little technical difficulty here.
Ms. Bateman.
Yes, sir.
Her, her laptop may be frozen.
Click down here. And then drag the ball.
Oh, there you go. Let's see, did that work? Did that work? There we go.
Thanks, Will. Thanks, Will.
All right, now we're going to travel in time back to number one. Our, yeah, we're just going to break for a minute.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Adam. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Thank you. I'm making contributions from the town. Okay.
All right. Were you here for the 42nd Brew? Okay, so we're going to take that one out of order as well. So that's number three. Review and approve requests from the 42nd Brew Company to have a 5K. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or want to make a motion?
I move to approve the request from 42nd Brew Co. to have a 5K on Saturday, December 13th, 2025, from 9:15 AM, I'm assuming? Yeah. To 12:00 PM, along Maple Street, Landing Road, River Street, Jones River Drive, Marsh Road, Backdown River Street, Landing Road, Linden Street, Backdown Landing Road, and finishing on Maple Street, with the following conditions: Work with the Kingston Police Department on the hiring of police officers along the route. Notify in writing to all residents and businesses along the route.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye.
Kim, aye. Missy, aye.
Kyle Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, we have a second motion.
And then, further, I move that the Board of Selectmen allow the use of Maple Street Fire Station and the Townhouse Parking Lot for parking on Saturday, December 13th, 2025.
Do I have a second? Did you want to second that, Carl?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye.
Kim, aye. Missy, aye.
Kyle Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, we have a second motion.
And then, further, I move that the Board of Selectmen allow the use of Maple Street Fire Station and the Townhouse Parking Lot for parking on Saturday, December 13th, 2025.
Do I have a second? Did you want to second that, Carl?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye.
Kim, aye. Missy, aye.
Kyle Pike, aye.
Donna.
Okay, perfect.
All right, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going back to number one. Public hearing for classification of property tax for tax purposes. So pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Board of Selectmen will hold its annual public hearing on the classification of property for tax purposes. The Selectmen shall first determine the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property and personal property for fiscal year '26. During the hearing, the Board of Assessors shall provide all information relevant to making such determination and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. Based on information provided, the Board of Selectmen shall adopt a residential factor to be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentages of the fiscal year '26 local Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 6:00 P. M. in the Townhouse, Room 200, 26 Evergreen, Kingston, Mass. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye.
Kim, aye. Missy, aye.
Kyle Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, we will hand it over. I think we have a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maureen Clark, I'm the Principal Assessor, and I'm here to present to you the tax classification for fiscal 2026. So the, the main item on this is whether to set a split or whether to split the rate or not, but before we go to that, I just need to go over some of the, of the open space discount, the residential exemption, and the small commercial exemption. So we'll start with the, the discount for open space. Great. So currently, there are no open space parcels classified in, in Kingston. Most of the landowners here either participate in one of the chapter lands, which is either Chapter 60, which is forestry, 61A is agriculture, and 61B is recreation, open space. And those discounts under open space range from 75 to 98%. The open space discount has a maximum amount of 25%. So our, the residents in our town who are into the chapter land are going under the three other chapter programs. The open space discount is mainly for like out west, for large hundred and hundred acre parcels. So the Board of Assessors voted to not recommend we accept this open space discount. Any questions on that? Okay. So we'll move to the residential exemption. So the residential exemption shifts the burden from the owner occupied residents to the non-owner occupied residents. In Kingston, we do not have a large amount of properties that are not owner occupied. The places like Boston or the Cape are the, are where you'll see the shift, because we're still collecting the same levy for them, but you'll see the shift to the non-owner occupied residents. And there are nine of them in the inner city. There's eight Cape and one in the southwest Mass, so for, to make sense, it really is for a city or town that has an abundance of non-owner occupied properties. It's, it's quite a process to go through it, too. Every resident that is occupying the property has to apply for it and bring in their information. We have to verify it with census and voting. So the amount of work and, and what we would get from it, it doesn't seem that it would be great for the town of Kingston. The Board of Assessors also voted not to recommend this exemption. Anyone, any questions on that? And so the last exemption we are going to talk about is the small commercial exemption. And this exemption would give a, a reduction to small commercial owners at the expense of larger and industrial parcels. So this is, it would give an exemption to small commercial properties, but not to small industrial properties, so they would still pay their share. To qualify, the business must have been occupied as of January 1st of 2025 and have no, not more than, have more, no more than 10 employees. The building must have a valuation of less than $1 million. Similar to the residential exemption, we still have to raise this levy. We still have the levy, it's not exempting anything, it's just, just giving the burden to one class of properties. And in doing that, sometimes you're giving, you think you're giving a break to a small commercial property, but if they're renting or leasing the property, it's the owner of the business that gets the deduction, reduction, not the business itself. So again, on this one, the Board of Assessors voted not to recommend the small commercial exemption. Okay, the, the next page is the assessed home value sheet. This is just showing you where values have gone over the last 10 years, and you'll see just an informative sheet, and up until like 21, they might be going up $20,000 a year in value. From 21 up, it's approximately like $50,000 each year in value, so it seems that ever since COVID, the, the properties have gone up in a faster way. It's, so this year, it is, the average home value is $679,727. And we'll go to the next page, which this is again, a tax rate history sheet, which is going in the other direction, which coincides with the values. So over the years, the tax rate has been going down. We had a little bump in '25, and it went up 26 cents. This year, and it will show you that sheet, the estimated tax rate would be 1283.
The slides are also in the packet, too, if you want to look at it later, on the website.
I can give you one.
Okay, thank you.
The next sheet is the classification report that I sent to the state, and all the, all the values report, the classification, the LA 4, we call it LA 13, they have all been certified by the state at this point. And this just shows you, each year, we might change the parcel count and the values a little bit, it goes down. Each class, the 101s of, single families, 102 condos, 104, 105 are multifamily, 111 to 125 apartment buildings. But when we do this, we send it in, the DOR looks at it, it checks to see if, why we lost two exempt parcels, or why we gained it, if the town bought an exempt parcel, though it's just for them to have a snapshot on where our values are for this year. And we have, see at the bottom, the total value is about $3,606 for this year. And the next slide is the pie chart, and this, this is a good, a good point of reference when you're deciding whether to split the rate or not. It's, it shows you how much is residential in a picture, which says a lot. So 88% of our town is residential property. And then you have the personal property at 4.43, industrial at .68, and commercial at 6.88. So we are largely a residential community at this point, and hoping to, I guess, at some point, get some more commercial properties in to help with the tax burden. Okay, the next slide is the LA 3 base levy growth. And this shows you the single family homes, the, the growth there, that was a decent amount this year. The land was a decent amount. The single family homes weren't all new homes this year. Sometimes the houses are in flux for the year, so I take half of it one year and half of it the next year. So along with that, in additions to people's property, that was our new growth for residential. Vacant land was, we have 22 new parcel, land parcels in a new development, Cali Marie Way, and that plan was sent to the registry before January 1st, making them individual properties, individual parcels. Four parcels came out of chapter land, so that went from chapter land into vacant land. And then the commercial, but bottom line is that our new growth was $395,000, which is significantly lower than last year. And we go to the next page, there's a couple of reasons for that. This sheet shows you the base, it compares you from, compares last year and this year, has in there what the 101 value is, and the estimated growth for new houses. But there's one area that we, there's two reasons we're low. One, I believe it was the water moratorium, because we didn't have as many permits this year. And a second reason is our personal property. So you'll see on this, the bottom of the page, how the negative personal property value, which is substantial, that is because of the utilities, National Grid and Eversource. So how it works is, what's in our town January 1st? So whatever equipment is in the town January 1st, we get to tax it. In other years, during when they were in tall timbers and putting new poles up, and they had quite a bit of, of equipment there, and we got a large amount of personal property from them. And this year, so it's just, you never know, it's hard to predict that. This year, there was not many, not much from the personal property from those two Eversource and National Grid. Any questions so far on anything? Okay. So the next page is the, is the maximum allowable levy, which is the levy sheet. And just how you start it, how we start, we start looking at this at last year's levy. So last year's levy was $44,227,535. We didn't have any amended growth, that's when you, it's something you don't pick up and you realize that the next year, you can put it in as amended growth. Proposition two and a half increase is just multiplication, and we get that number, and then the new growth is added in, which was the 395,974. That brings us to a levy limit for 2026 at $45,000, $45,729,197. Okay, the last thing we do is add in the debt exclusion and any overrides that we might have. So that was, the debt exclusion was added, which brings us to a maximal allowable levy, which is $46,609,493. And that, right now, is an estimate, I'm not sure if we're going to tax right to the levy or not. Waiting for the, the account and, and the other papers to be submitted to the state, but I think we'll be close. I think we're going to be close to the, the levy, so that's where our tax rate's coming up, so I, I don't think our numbers will be far off, they're not certified yet. And then we'll go to the sheet that will show you the different tax rates if we split the rate at all. So right now, I have, as a single tax rate, the estimated single tax rate is 1283. And if you look down the sheet, you'll just see, you can, you can switch it a little bit. You can go, just, it shows you all the different CIP, which is Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property, shifts. And where you shift, it will give you a residential tax rate and a CIP tax rate. So that would be something we'd look at if we're, if we want to shift the burden of the tax, taxes. Any questions on that? Okay. See, do I have any more here? Okay, average single family change, last year's tax rate was 1297, on the home value of $633,409, and the average tax bill last year was $9,215. This year, the home value was $679,727, at a proposed rate of 1283, and that would come out to an average tax bill of $8,721. The value difference, 46,318, and the average tax bill difference would be $506.
Such a bargain.
Huh?
Such a bargain.
Mind you, that is not the same, it's, the average doesn't always take into consideration everything. So Colonials might go up more than Capes, different neighborhoods might go up more than other neighborhoods, some may go down, sometimes a house, every like seven years, it's depreciation, that house might be taken, some depreciation off, so it's different. So there's a lot of other factors that go into this, but to give you some idea, we use average, and that's where it came out to. And the last sheet is just the summary sheet. The Board of Assessors recommend a single tax rate by adopting a minimal residential factor of one. It seems it fails to adopt in Kingston because of our lack of commercial property, and the Board of Assessors, as I said during the slide, does not recommend the open space discount, the residential exemption, or the small business exemption.
All right, thank you. Any?
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Well. Ken's here, if you'd like to. She want, he wants to ask. I don't, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, any, any questions from the board, Don, Carl?
Any questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead, Marcia.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. And just introduce yourself at the.
Yes, my name is Marcia Meekins. I'm a member of the Finance Committee. I'm not here in an unofficial capacity, however. My question is, you rejected the, the board rejected the open space discount rate, and I didn't, I'm not sure I understood why. Is it because it's so much higher than the 25%? Got a little confused. Number one, and what would the, what's the delta? If we accepted the state discount, open space rate, what, rather than rejecting it?
There isn't any opening, because we have no open space parcels right now.
Oh, so that's why you rejected it? Oh, because, I guess you said you rejected that. I was confused by that. You were voted not to adopt it, because we don't have any?
Yes. Yes. We didn't, we didn't so much say that we recommended not to adopt it, but there was no point in adopting it because we don't have any.
Right.
Or we do have some, but they're all taking of other, taking advantage of other legislation.
Right.
It gives them a bigger break, so there was really no point in proposing to use it.
Okay, so it's not like you can reject the other options under the state law, that's what I was curious about.
Well, we don't, we don't reject, we make a proposal to the Board of Selectmen.
We can't take away the state exemption that people are using.
You can't take away the state exemption, which is better than our town exemption would be. How many parcels in town are eligible for that state exemption? On the DLS website, would that be the, the land that's listed under vacant accessory?
No.
Foreign? They don't list, they don't have an open space parcel. That's okay, I'll ask the next policy question. And that was, you rejected the residential exemption because you said that it would not be great for the town.
I think those two other exemptions, if I may. I think the, the other two exemptions were, the concern is the administrative cost. There's a lot, a lot of administrative effort that would have to go into that. People have to apply, we have to keep records, there would be, you know, so much more of a burden on the office, and I'm not sure that we would have the personnel to do it. We might have to be looking at, you know, more help, so it just didn't make financial sense, you know, the return on investment. As, as the town of Kingston is right now, it just isn't there.
I guess my question would be from a policy perspective. Did you look at what impact it might have on the average homeowner in Kingston? I looked it up on the DLS. I looked it up on the DLS website, and if we adopted a half a percent residential exemption, it would save most people, the average $697,000 homeowner, money. It would, and it would only raise my taxes a tiny bit. So I'm just saying, I understand from your standpoint that it might be costly to implement, but in the long run, would it be, from a policy perspective, hey, the ship has sailed for this year, I understand that. But I mean, could we have like a robust policy to abide about going forward on that? I think it would, I think it would be a great idea, but that's just a policy consideration, and that's why if I asked you if you rejected it simply because of the impact it might have on your office, but I'm asking about the consideration on the taxpayer.
Any impact on our office is also on the taxpayer.
I said, but might the tax.
Because they need to pay us for all the things that we need to do to, you know, to administer that.
Yeah, I understand, but that would be like a one-time expense.
No, no, no. Let me just interrupt. Let me interrupt for a second. I think I might be able to give you the answer on this. So if we were a town where we had a whole lot of investment properties where people were renting and, and, you know, doing Airbnb and that kind of thing, I think it could potentially make sense because you might have a high, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's non-resident owners, but people who live there in the house.
You misunderstand, it is for.
Oh, go, oh, right back up there.
It's for single-family owner occupied, single-family residents.
Correct, but, but what you're doing is you're, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're shifting some of the tax burden from them to people who own a property but don't live there. Am I, am I right in that?
Right.
Okay, so to do that, they would, let's just say you have to hire another person to do this, you're adding costs to the town that does, is not a one-time cost.
Again, I don't, again, I just went on the DLS website to give a quick analysis, and it looked to me like the, a lot of taxpayers in Kingston's taxes would go down.
What, facing it on what data?
It seemed to, the DLS data.
Do they say how many people own or reside in the house they own?
Again, it was just a gross, you submit your town.
No, but what I'm, what I'm asking you, does that, does the DLS data tell you how many homes are owned by people who don't live in the house?
It just tells you the valuation.
But it doesn't tell you whether a person lives there. So that's what we would need to know. And we're not a town that's.
All I'm doing is I used that tool. I, I went on and I looked at a tool, and it, I'm not skilled at using that tool, but it said to me, maybe it is a, a policy that would be worth considering for a way of spreading the tax burden among, you know, it seems to me that the notion is the higher the value of the house, you know, you got a really big house.
But, but, complete, let's just say there's three people in town, well, there's, I'm sure there's more than that. Let's say there's 100 people in town who own the home, but they rent it out. Because again, that's what we're talking about, am I right?
No, I'm not.
No, I'm not talking to you. I'm not talking to you, Marcia. What I'm saying is, in order for, for anybody, for our residents to see a savings there, you'd have to have a large amount of people who are taking that tax burden off. The tax doesn't go away and the state's paying it. Somebody else in town is paying it.
I'm paying it. I'm not, I wouldn't benefit from it.
But, yeah, hold, hold on, just wait till you get back to the microphone.
I wouldn't benefit from it, according to the DLS website, because the value of my house is higher than the amount, you know, the people above me, me and above would pay slightly more. But the people below me would pay substantially less.
No, 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 no. I think you're, you're looking at it.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
I think you're misunderstanding.
I don't want to debate, again, maybe I misunderstood.
So you, you will pay more tax than somebody who owns a less expensive house. But what, what this exemption does is if you own your house and you live there, let's say we give a 1% discount, anybody who lives in their, in their house is going to get that 1% discount. We're going to take that 1% savings across all these residents who live in their, the house that they own, and we're going to take that money and put it on residential where people don't live.
Well, you see the towns that the municipalities have adopted it. There, there are towns where they have a lot of summer homes.
Right.
No one, the owners don't live there. They rent the homes.
Right.
Or they're in urban areas where there are a lot of rentals.
Rentals.
Triple deckers, you know, multiple-story residences.
So we don't have rentals, we don't have.
We have some, I would say we don't have a significant amount.
We don't have enough to, to make it.
Right.
To get the return on the investment in administering it.
Yes, Eric, you probably came up with the right amount, about like 100, 120, and we're talking about 4,500 parcels. So we're shifting, we're shipping the, the base from the 45 to the 120.
Right.
And how much will we shift to make it worth, it wouldn't be much off the 4,500 parcels. Those, the break would not be significant for such a low shift.
So, so 43, I'm just throwing a number out there. 4,300 people will have some savings, but the 100 people who own the property but don't live there would be paying more in their property taxes.
But this is essentially what our friend over there, Mr. Pike, often brings up, is it seems like you'd be punishing those folks using this as a business opportunity. So rather than encouraging business, you're taxing them more.
Right.
Anyway, like you said, it's not something that we're probably going to tackle this evening, but Marcia, if we want to look more into this.
I'm not going to send you the DLS.
As we, as we proceed to next year, I think that that's, that's completely fine. We can look at that.
And I'd love to know if the DLS website actually shows how many people own a house but don't live there. Is that data?
They don't have that information.
But then it's meaningless, because then you're guessing at how many people own a property but don't live there. You don't know. I don't know in my own neighborhood how many people own their homes and, and are renting it out to somebody else. I don't know. I honestly don't know. So we would have to find out that data for the entire town, and that's going to take somebody to collect that data. So do we want to invest money into taking a survey of the town to find out, and then are people going to be honest about it? I don't know. I don't know. All right. So that's the key to finding out whether this would work or not. Are there any other questions or, or comments or, you know, questions about anything?
Anything from the public online, potentially?
Is there anybody online who wanted to speak? No?
I move the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Aye. Missy, aye.
Kyle Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, somebody want to make another motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relatives who setting the fiscal year 2026 tax rates and set the residential factor at 1.0 with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.0, pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye. Missy, aye.
Kyle Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you for the presentation. All right, next up we have an update from the Recycling Committee. Welcome, Jean.
I just wanted to say my, my.
Oh, that's okay.
Just wanted to make that one, just doing it.
Yep, thank you.
All right, good evening. Jean Lanta Snollman, Wolf Pond Road Chairman of the Recycling Committee, and I have a fellow member, David O'Connell, here with me tonight. I'll try and get through this pretty quickly for you. But I did think it was important for you to know a lot about what we're doing on our committee because it affects everything in town. Other members not present here are Joe Kazna, Vanessa Vercotti, and Jean Wyatt. We meet monthly. We work closely with the Superintendent of Streets, Trees, and Parks, as well as the Facilities Department. And our DEP Municipal Assistance Coordinator, Todd Kep, regularly attends our meetings and, as well as the Superintendent, as his schedule allows. So over the past several years, we have supported the town in state recycling initiatives in several ways. We've purchased and ensured that recycling bins are installed in all the town facilities. We are developing a recycling information display now to locate it in the main entrance of the Town Hall, and you've probably all seen that or not realized it was there. We are participating in the annual agricultural fair and other events such as Night Out. We've held two fix-it clinics where people bring items that need to be fixed or, you know, which contributes to reuse of items and eliminating new purchases. So each year, in coordination with Todd and the Superintendent, we apply for and receive recycling dividend program grants that are based on the recycling activities of the citizens. So that money comes in, generally it's funneled to the Recycling Committee where we can then use it to do additional things that will benefit the residents and improve their recycling. So in turn, it generates more grant money for us. Some of the things we've used that money for are the, in anticipation of the plastic bag ban, was purchasing and issuing regular and thermo-reusable shopping bags. We've also in the past having out jar scrapers, which allows you to utilize the entire product in a jar of peanut butter or mayonnaise, that sort of thing. Last, a couple of years ago, we handed out multiple-use openers for residents to eliminate the need for multiple types of openers. We also contribute money to the Library of Things at the Town Library. If you haven't utilized any of their items, you might want to check out what they have available. You know, something you might not use on a regular basis, but it would be nice to use periodically. And we also try to include messages about recycling on the water, sewer, and tax bills. We have set up an organic waste collection program, and with the grant money, we bought collection buckets with lids for a, for the first 100 people who participated in our pilot. And we're doing this because 20 to 5 to 30% of our trash is organic, and sometimes it's the heaviest and it's the messiest part of the trash. We are working with the Council on Aging, they now have a bin over there, so we have three bins at the transfer station, and there one bin. And that's costing the taxpayers through the grant $344 a month. Okay, so the grant money is going towards that. We're, we're looking at co-digestion of food waste at the wastewater treatment facility. There was a recent webinar on that. Elaine tells me that she did view that. She's going to talk with their engineers to see if that would be feasible, because the state grant only allows us to cover that expense for five years, and we're going to be into our fourth year. So we're going to have to find a different way to dispose of the material at no cost to the taxpayers, because we won't be able to use grant money for that. Years ago, we did set up a swap shop using an old construction trailer that was donated by the Highway Department. We did have to spend some money on signage and mold mitigation for that. And then David and his son and some other individuals constructed shelving for in there when that old trailer was condemned at the end of the COVID period because of inundate, infestation of mice and there had been water intrusion. The Highway Department was gracious enough to take those shelves out and store them for us at the Maple Street Fire Station. So this year, we did apply for a new grant to purchase a new facility. You've probably seen it down there, it's a very nice-looking shed, and the Highway Department was helpful in bringing those shovings back. So we've got it pretty well set up, but because there's no heat or air conditioning, it really only operates in decent weather. So you'll see there's a sign on the door that says, "We intend to open up in April." But with the lessons we learned from the previous swap shop, it's going to have to be manned by volunteers at all times. I personally spent about 20 hours a week in there cleaning it out. I no longer have the time or the inclination to donate that many hours. And it was just a shame, because once it got filled up, people couldn't get in to look at things. So we're going to take a more practical approach, I think, by reviewing every item as it comes in, make sure it's suitable, you know, it's not cracked, it's not chipped, it's not missing pieces, or it's not filthy. And then we're going to date it, so that items will be inventoried periodically and removed if they've been there too long. So we're really looking forward to having that open up. If there are individuals who would like to volunteer to work at the swap shop, there, we have a special email address that, for the swap shop, and that is on our webpage, and it's also on the door to the new swap shop. We've hired a social media manager, and if you're on Facebook at all, you'll see that there's things being posted two to three times a week on there. And we're hoping that that's a better way to get information out to more of the residents. We did write the bylaw for the plastic bag ban, it was passed a town meeting, and we have worked with the Health Department to implement that. We also worked with the Board of Health to implement a regulation on private haulers, requiring them to also offer recycling in addition to trash hauling. So I regularly attend the board meetings of the South Shore Recycling Cooperative. The town is a member of that organization, as are 17 other communities on the South Shore. And I recently stepped down from the Executive Board after serving on there for several years. Those of us on the Recycling Committee try to attend webinars about recycling. We also share a lot of articles about recycling. Last year, I was invited to join the Silver Lake Regional School Wellness Advisory Committee, and attended several meetings. And I did an onsite assessment visit and made recommendations how they can increase the recycling of several materials. Now it's up to them and the administration to see what they can do about that. I have presented information on recycling on several shows produced by the local scene. The Superintendent and I, this is Paul Bassler, participated in a video on organic waste collection for the Green Team in Hangum. We have designed and manufactured the new Kingston Recycle Street signs that you see around town. This initiative was shared with similar sign from the Agricultural Commission to save costs, and the Highway Department put them up on the same pole. So we saved some costs there. And we receive monthly reports on the volume of textiles recycled at the transfer station and at the schools, and we try and let them know if the bin from Bay State is full. We do receive $140 a ton from Bay State for the textiles collected there, textiles collected at the schools, some of that money goes to the PTO. And there is a statewide ban on textiles in, in the trash. In the spring, we hope to be able to be onsite at transfer station, assist residents with questions, encourage them to participate in all the recycling programs, and help with placement of material in the correct bins. As you know, the state is now promoting pay-as-you-thrown, and while we did explore this as a community a few years ago, it did not pass a town meeting. There's renewed interest in looking at this. It's been a proven way to reduce the costs of your trash disposal, because once people realize how much it costs to dispose of a bag of trash, they're quickly learning how to recycle and remove everything that doesn't have to be put in the trash. We are in, in the middle of a contract with CMAS. Our contract runs out in 2029. We're paying a little bit over $80 a ton. The current contracts are being renewed at $140 a ton. So we know that that's what we're going to be looking at when this current contract You can see, a lot of all this is done by the volunteers on the committee, utilizing the grant money that the residents earn through their recycling act. the grant money that the residents earn through their recycling activities. So we, we're very pleased with the amount of money that we receive every year. We try and use it as judiciously as we can, spread it out to benefit as many residents as we possibly can. Any questions?
Any questions? Well, I'd just like to say thank you for, for working on this for so long, to all of you. I mean, I, I know, I don't know how many years everybody's been on it, but I know it's been, been a long time.
It's a group of dedicated individuals.
Yep.
And we know there's, there's a lot of other dedicated individuals in the community that are fully recycling as much as they possibly can. We want to keep promoting the organic collection and see if we can't get more participants in that particular program because we do think that that will benefit the community as a whole if we can improve that, that percentage. And see if we can't find a way to work either with the highway department to compost at the compost, you know, with the yardway side, or work with the sewer department to see if we can incorporate it there so that that would eliminate that cost to have it removed and, and processed.
That's great.
All right?
That's great.
All right. Thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If I'm mistaken, we're up to number five. We have a request from the police department to extend up to 66,000 in opioid, opioid settlement funds.
Can you just show me your fund?
Yes, please.
You give that and we're off.
There's only, no wait, you have to use that. There's only one slot.
I only have one little. Do you have a little?
It's a C as well.
Oh, fancy.
Fancy, fancy.
Wow.
So this one?
Yes.
You already know the real name.
Yep.
We're just keeping you on your toes, Will.
Yeah, we jumped all over the place, Will.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, boy.
Is it frozen?
Share screen? Oh, boy.
No, it's just multi-layered.
Yeah. Perfect. There it goes. Beautiful.
Yeah.
Cook on the fire. And then just hit.
Right here?
Yeah.
How can you even see that?
Don, we miss you.
Yep, yep, young eyes.
There we go.
Yeah.
See if it works here.
Is that, well, you're not in, it's not, no, it's the bottom left corner, there should be something, or the right corner, yeah, that right there. I was not doing it.
I always knew I was needed. There we go.
There you go.
Yeah, we're purposely just slowing down for you.
Master.
Hey, we have a logo.
Not bad, right? All right. By way of introduction, Michael Scavera, Detective Lieutenant for the Police Department. I oversee our special operations here before you relative to three agenda items. I'm hoping this short presentation can explain all three. And obviously, I can answer questions as we go procedurally, whatever works for you. Just appreciate your time. First, I want to introduce you to what is going to be the Kingston Police Department Family Services Unit. It's something that you guys, I'm sure, have heard Chief Holmes talk about for some time by way of the sergeant's position he recently requested and by way of his previous request to apply for a DMH grant for a clinician. That is part of this greater picture. We're effectively at the point where it's all kind of tying together, which is what brings those three agenda items before you tonight, as well as this presentation kind of explaining everything in one big picture. Obviously, as you know, the chief is out right now, so in his absence, he's asked me to kind of move this project forward. So the unit is going to be the FSU Sergeant, which is somebody that is a current sergeant that's being moved to that role as a result of that seventh sergeant position that you guys created at a recent meeting. As well as, we're looking to get approval from you tonight to hire a clinician, which is going to be entirely funded by a DMH grant, which we recently just got approval for within the last week. And it's also going to move some other positions we already have, are going to fall, just chain to command wise, within the jurisdiction of this unit. They'll end up continuing to fall under my command. So that's how, this is how it'll look within the department's organizational structure. Essentially, you end up with the FSU unit with the sergeant, the clinician, and the SROs. And I'll speak a little bit more about how that's going to play into the department as a whole, but those highlighted yellow portions before you is really the change. There's been some discussion about why a sergeant. I won't go too in-depth, but effectively before you, you see a couple of charts you've seen before relative to our growth in services, our growth in services, both by calls for service, the number of calls per sworn officer. We've seen fiscal, fiscal year, I'm sorry, calendar year 24 and calendar year 23, we saw that Kingston PD officers had more calls per officer than calls per officer in those other listed jurisdictions, including a lot of our neighbors like Duxbury, Halifax, Pembroke, et cetera. On the right side of the screen, you see added responsibilities. These are responsibilities that have been added within the last 10 years that have never had a supervisory position added to support them. All of these responsibilities are either done by current supervisors or by officers, but those responsibilities need to be audited by supervisors. There needs to be checks of training, checks of records, for instance, things as high liability as TASER instructors, less lethal, those types of things where we're getting into use of force, there needs to be supervisory oversight. We also in 2014 had no school resource officers. We now have four certified school resource officers, full-time at the high school, full-time at the middle school. We have a school resource officer at KES, KIS, Sacred High. All of that requires supervisory oversight, of course, right? Reports, things that come up. So traditionally, they've been reporting to me and it's just, the responsibilities have grown as we've grown those roles. And this would just give them somebody, that first level supervisor to report to. And there's other things you see here which are going to fall within the role of the FSU Sergeant, such as our partnership with Plymouth County Outreach and some of our other community outreach programs. Not everything that's listed to the right there is going to be the FSU Sergeant's job, but that's just to kind of illustrate some of the things that have been added to the supervisory structure within the last decade, kind of justifying the need for that seventh The clinician co-response is going to be a large part of this unit, right? So this is that DMH grant I just referenced where we receive funding from Department of Mental Health to hire clinician if the board approves it tonight. Effectively, what that is, you may have seen it in neighboring communities, it's a co-response model. So what will happen is if there is an acute call for service for somebody having a mental health problem like suicidal ideations, something along those outlines, hallucinations, a police officer will still respond, standard police response will be the same, but then also, when available, the clinician with the assigned FSU sergeant will also respond to that scene. That's just somebody with a little bit more training in that field that can help almost in an advisory role to the officers on scene on what's the best course of action here? Is this criminal? Is this mental health related? What is the best way to handle this call? And the intent really of that DMH grant is a jail diversion program. It's really to take instances where individuals should not be getting locked up and we can offer them services instead. That is the goal. And in theory, if we're able to stabilize individuals within the community, reduce the likelihood of these acute incidents, it's going to reduce the likelihood of use of force incidents and hopefully reduce the calls for service as well. If they're stable in the community and they're working with the clinician, hopefully we can reduce the need for these types of responses. There will be follow-up calls where the clinician will go out with patrol officers to these individuals' households absent the acute call, so they're, they're normal, but we're just checking in type incidents. By way of the grant's expectations, because of the, the amount of calls for service, and obviously DMH has a lot of requests for funding, to be able to get approved for this grant, we had to partner with Plimpton and Halifax for the overall call volume to be able to justify getting this full-time clinician position. So the clinician will be expected to provide these same services to the towns of Plimpton and Halifax. They'd be a town of Kingston employee. We are considered the lead party, we're the applying party with DMH, but we would be expected to ensure that this clinician that's funded by DMH also provides those services to Plimpton and Halifax. Had a lot of talks with Plimpton Chief, Halifax Chief, how this would work out. And I'll get a little bit more into how that's going to have to look, but the expectations effectively are that they provide the same service, the clinician provides the same service, they're just housed here in Kingston. One of the things before you tonight is relative to the workspace, excuse me. The station, as we know, is well past its prime, right? The police department is outgrowing the station. The station's been before town meeting before to potentially be replaced. We lost that by a near margin many years ago. The station does not have the capabilities to grow into this unit or for this unit to grow into the station. So one of the things before you is to, to kind of make do is a modular office trailer. That's, the motivation for that is a lot of what's listed on the screen before you here, just the issues we're having with the outdated station. The modular office trailer, this is what's proposed tonight. It is an eight by 32 trailer would go on the east side of the building, kind of near where we park our cruisers. The intent would be that it would be office space for both the FSU sergeant and the clinician, as well as interview space or holding space for juveniles or other individuals going through crisis, kind of a, what we call like a soft room. It would look like a living room space. It's kind of best practice when dealing with individuals with trauma, instead of like the hard, cold interrogation room style space. That'd be the intent of the trailer. We have had communications with members at the state that deal with opioid abatement funds, and we've been informed that opioid abatement funds can be used, that this is an allowable use of those funds because the primary purpose is to help with individuals with mental health and substance use disorder through the use of the clinician. Of course, it's expensive, right? This goes into the opioid abatement funds and kind of how they're, they can be used. And also, I highlighted a couple of particular portions relative to the pooling of abatement funds through other municipalities, and I'll speak to that a little bit more. Obviously, with this being a regional unit, effectively a regional resource, we're going to try to seek getting some, some funding from Plimpton and Halifax, but as you know, that's on, that's their own decision to make. But we're hoping to still be able to move forward with the trailer and go from there. But this is just speaking to the regulations that are on the state website about the opioid abatement funds and how we can use them for this purpose. This is our last knowledge as far as the overall opioid abatement funds. We also are aware that approximately $18,000 were earmarked for PCO, as you guys recall from a previous meeting. Plymouth County Outreach, that's our organization that we partner with for substance use disorder, follow-ups, individuals that have overdosed, resources we offer. That organization has existed for quite a few years now. We partnered with them. They needed some funding. They're trying to get funding from every town in the county. That's some money that we put towards them, leaving us a little over $100,000 still in our opioid abatement fund account. The request before you today is for $66,000. The trailer was about 50, I'll tell you exactly what it was. The trailer was 52, 845. The request for 56 is based off estimations of installation costs, electricity, tables, getting it all hooked up. And obviously, if anything's left over, we don't spend it, remains in that account, right? And then they'll leave a little over $50,000 in the account. And of course, that account continues to receive funding for the foreseeable future through those settlements with those pharmacy companies. Another piece, which I kind of referenced slightly earlier, is this Plimpton Halifax piece and how we're going to make this work. An intermunicipal agreement has to be done. This intermunicipal agreement is designed to ensure we provide those services that DMH requires us to provide to these other communities, but also in the event there are unallowable expenses that we cannot bill to DMH, how should that be fairly split up and how should we do that? Currently, as I stand before you today, I don't know of any expenses that I cannot bill to DMH. In thorough conversations with DMH, the equipment, like radios, vests, things like that, covered. Laptop, covered. Cell phone, covered. All of the salary benefits, health insurance, covered. It's just a matter of one way or the other, somehow we went over. I don't anticipate that, or realistically, in the future, if DMH funding were to be cut or go away. That's really why we need this IMAs in place. And of course, there is a termination clause where if, if we find ourselves in that position where DMH is no longer willing to fill this or to fund this position, we could terminate the IMAs and no longer fund it if the town deemed fit. There's, on the right side of this screen is what I'm going to request from those towns as startup costs to help us. So the left side is the IMAs and I have obviously the full document and percentage points about what I think would be appropriate to assess those towns. At the end of the day, the percentages that are down there is equivalent to Silver Lake. Figured what better way to do it, right? So Kingston's portion, Halifax's portion, Plimpton's portion is exactly to the fiscal year 25 Silver Lake assessments. Then on the right, this is relative to the trailer. My thought process is that trailer is half the clinician, half the FSU sergeant. That FSU sergeant and the use of the interview space will be almost entirely Kingston. The clinician is that shared resource. So I would say roughly half out the gate is already just Kingston's cost, and then the remaining half, you could argue, is that split regional resource. Where then splitting that, using that percentage point from Silver Lake gives us those dollar amounts you see before you. So that remaining 33, a little over 18 being Kingston's share, just under 10 being Halifax' share, and about 4,500 bucks being Plimpton's share. Now, my goal, my hope, is that the board will approve me to spend up to the $66,000 tonight to be able to purchase this trailer. And if I'm able to get from Plimpton or Halifax any of these dollars, great, and we can use that towards allowable expenses that are permitted tonight. And if not, then we still are able to move forward. Yes, sir?
So just a quick comment on that. So the Silver Lake assessment, the percentages.
Yes.
If, if I remember correctly, that, that's based on the number of students that are sent from each of the towns.
Yes.
So, which, which is probably right on track, but you may also want to just look at overall population numbers and see if the percentages are the same. My guess is they're going to be pretty close because, I mean, over the 20 something years I was paying attention, we were anywhere from like 52 to like 58%.
Yes.
Like over the many years.
I tried to look at percentage, population as well as calls for service, right? So we have, we did, during our application process with DMH, we received letters of support from the Plimpton Police Department and the Halifax Police Department. During that process, they also assisted up with statistics from their PDs. So between calls for service, population, and the Silver Lake assessments, they were all roughly similar. I figured the only concrete thing that is in place already between the towns as far as assessments, I'd stay consistent with the school because they are roughly similar to the point.
Yeah, okay.
But I would say we could always look at that too in the future. If over time, there's a higher call volume in one community versus another, we could, we may want to look at that formula again. But this is at least a starting place.
Exactly. And the IMAs does, in the draft language, already lay out a procedure for if the towns want to renegotiate it. It's essentially a fiscal year by fiscal year contract.
Got it.
Can I ask you one question before you change?
Yes.
Are any of the expenses or services provided by the family clinician reimbursable, clinician, reimbursable through Medicaid potentially?
No.
Okay.
Strictly DMH. In fact, the model wants us to stay away from anything insurance related as much as possible because we don't want to be essentially charging people, or you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So DMH, it's all covered through the grant. And the way they built it was to hopefully create a situation where we're not paying a dime.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure. Just to kind of give you guys, you know, this isn't just me, this isn't just Chief Holmes saying this program is great. Last year, we did a department survey of the concept of doing this program, of having a clinician, of how big of a deal is mental health in our community. So this is a department-wide survey. I believe, I think it was 10 or 12 members chose to answer anonymously. A bunch more members answered with their names. But as you could see, percent of calls that officers believe involve mental health or substance use, 40%. That's a lot, right? Of course, it's not always easy to quantify because it's not written in every call for service. It's suspected. If there's no facts that are necessarily there, it's not ending up in reports. But that's the officer's perception. They suspect approximately 40% of calls involve one or the other. We see repeat offenders, we see a lot of things there, but I think what's incredibly important is towards the bottom here, on-staff mental health clinician, 92% of the department felt, yes, that's a great idea, right? And then would the department support the development of the family services unit, the unit that's before you today? 100% of the respondents said yes. I think that's huge. If you guys do approve us to hire this clinician, again, fully funded by DMH grant, if you do approve that tonight, it's going to be done with a TTA, a Training Technical Assistance Advisor, William James College. I've been working with them a bunch. They're funded by DMH to roll out these programs. So essentially, this is outside of my wheelhouse. I recognize that, right? I'm not a clinician myself, but this organization has already been a great help. DMH has deployed them as a co-response clinician, you know, program that they help with hiring, all of that. I think they're going to be great to kind of roll it out for us. And if there's ever any questions, questions around licensing of the clinician, clinical supervision, all of that has already come up. They've already answered a lot of questions for me, so I think we'd be in good hands if you guys were to approve this tonight. Any questions with me?
Is the office trailer new?
Yes, sir, it is. We did look at the potential of leasing one to see if that would save costs. We identified that the lease would be approximately $23,000 a year. So after approximately two and a half years, it would make more sense to just buy it. Of course, we anticipate being in the police station for longer than that time. We're not looking at a vote anytime soon for a new police station, so we think that the, the purchase was appropriate.
Thanks.
Sure.
And this went before capital planning and was
We did look at the potential of leasing one, to see if that would save costs. We identified that the lease would be approximately twenty-three thousand dollars a year, so after approximately two and a half years, it would make more sense to just buy it. Of course, we anticipate being in the police station for longer than that time, we're not looking at a vote anytime soon for a new police station, so we think that the purchase was appropriate.
Thanks.
Sure.
And this went before capital planning and was unanimously supported.
It did, thank you, ma'am. So capital planning saw this, not this presentation, but we did discuss the trailer specifically, so not the larger picture, but the trailer, and they did unanimously support the purchase of the trailer.
Right, and just as a reminder, even though it's grant-funded, it still falls under their bylaw because of the asset being above the dollar amount.
Exactly, yeah, and just to, just to clarify, the, the grant is the DMH clinician position.
Sorry.
The trailer would be opioid abatement funds.
Opioid funding, you're right, I apologize.
Nope, that's fine.
But sometimes people forget that it's not just for things like free cash or other funding sources.
So were there any other questions from the board? If not, do you want us to go ahead and consider the first motion? Are you ready for us?
I'm ready whenever you are, sir.
Okay, so the first one is a request to expand up to sixty-six thousand, as he described, in opioid settlement funds for the purchase, installation, and operationalize the modular office trailer at the current police department station. Any questions, comments?
Wait, hold on, we have one thing.
Just a quick question, the, the, the grant itself, is it, is it an upfront grant, where they just give you the money, or is it reimbursement, sort of like a chapter?
It's a reimbursement, sir, by month or quarterly, however we choose. We do anticipate being able to absorb those costs for that month or quarter, and then get the reimbursement from DMH.
Okay. Here we go.
Okay. Sorry, I was just looking at the finance director, making sure that...
About the work process.
Yep, of course, that makes sense, of course.
Right.
Okay, and if you guys will coordinate, I'm assuming the departments, okay, great.
So any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize the police chief and his lieutenants to expand opioid settlement funds not to exceed sixty-six thousand dollars to purchase, install, and operationalize a modular office trailer at the current police department station, as well as other related equipment and services for the use primarily by the proposed police department clinician and family services unit.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right. Thank you. And the next item is requesting the police department, for the police department to utilize a department of mental health grant and to begin the process to hire a co-response clinician funded by the grant. Are there any questions, comments?
I don't have any question, I have the same comment that I've been making on most of these new ones, that, you know, I, I certainly think this is a good idea, I'm going to approve it tonight, but I also say that it'll be considered with everything else in the police department for budgets for future years.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize the police chief and/or his lieutenants to utilize the approved Department of Mental Health Master Agreement Jail slash Arrest Diversion Program Grant and spend an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars as a reimbursement grant for the remainder of FY twenty-six, ending six-thirty-twenty-five, in compliance with the DMH statement of work, and to begin to hire a clinician as a town of Kingston Police Department, with final candidates being brought to the board for an official offer of employment, and shall be permitted to continue to employ the clinician and utilize the grant in subsequent fiscal years in the amount permitted for each fiscal year by the DMH statement of work, so long as funding remains available.
And just a friendly amendment, I think the date was wrong, so it's ending six-thirty twenty-twenty-six. In, in our motion, it says twenty-five, but it's, should be twenty-six.
Accepted.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, and now the last one is the request from the police department to enter negotiations with the town of Halifax and the town of Plimpton to complete an intermunicipal agreement for the use of the department co-response clinician. So that was in our presentation. If there are any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize the police chief and/or his lieutenants to enter into negotiations with the town of Halifax and the town of Plimpton to complete an intermunicipal agreement for the use of the department co-response clinician as a tri-town resource, and to return to the Kingston Board of Selectmen for final approval, as well as to seek out funding for, from those towns to assist in the initial rollout costs relative to the office trailer.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right.
Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the very detailed presentation, it's really helpful to...
Yes.
Can we have that? Can you send it to us? Okay, and Tricia, oh, it's on the website, look at you.
All right, next item is to appoint an interim building commissioner, William Horax. So, George, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a interim contract position as we're still searching to fill the position with a permanent applicant.
And you'll note even in the, in the motion that you're doing it, you can see, it starts on the twenty-fourth and then ends on the twenty-fourth of February.
Right.
Of course, for some, for some reason, you're not there, you can always redo it again for another month or two months, whatever it is, it's quite...
Microphone needs...
Oh.
Oh, jeez. Did you catch it from here? Did you pick it up over here?
I apologize for that, I, I, yes, if you look at the motion, it's, it's, it's going for approximately three months.
Three months.
Or ninety days, if at the end of that ninety days, there, there's some reason you still, you can always extend it again for another month or so, or whatever, until you get your new permanent building inspector.
But interim positions typically are more expensive hour by hour, so...
Yes.
Keeping that in mind, it's in our best interest to move...
Yes.
As quickly as we can with whatever candidate the...
We have been trying.
Yeah, I know, whatever, however it works with the hiring committee.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to appoint William Horax as the, or Horox, as the interim building inspector effective November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five through February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
I was a missy aye, but I was off, sorry.
All right, the next item is the appointment of Plumbing and Gas Inspector alternate, George Greenwood. At the time of the annual renewals, Mr. Greenwood had not responded, but now he's requesting to be reappointed.
Easy enough. I move to appoint George Greenwood as Plumbing and Gas Inspector alternate effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
All right.
Wait, hold on one minute.
Don, aye.
There he is.
And then we have appointment of Public Health Nurse due to resignation, the position of Public Health Nurse is vacant after the recruitment process. Health Agent Joyce Kristopolsky is requesting the hiring of Anne Marie Stacinos. We have a motion in front of us.
And she was online earlier, but she probably lost during the chat hearing.
I move to appoint Anne Marie Stacinos to the position of Public Health Nurse, a less-than-part-time, grade six, step seven position within wage and personnel bylaw with the Health Department, with an anticipated start date of November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, contingent with the terms in the offer letter.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, next, we have an appointment to the Waterfront Committee, there's a vacancy on the committee. At their last meeting on November fourth, the committee voted to recommend the appointment to the board for Sean Hagan.
I move to appoint Sean Hagan to the Waterfront Committee effectively, effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, next, the Fire Department received the following donations, requesting us to accept it, a two thousand and five Cadillac Escalade from Kathleen Hildebrand.
Okay, aye, yeah, go ahead.
I move to accept the donation of a two thousand and five Cadillac Escalade from Kathleen Hildebrand to be used for auto extrication and stabilization training.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
Don, aye.
Well, I know what to do with my car now, when it dies.
Uh, next item is appointment of a COA van driver, Cindy Mace. So currently, there's a vacancy for a van driver upon completion of the recruitment process. COA Director Holly Nageli is recommending Cindy Mace to fill the position.
I move to appoint Cindy Mace to the position of COA van driver, a grade three, step three, non-exempt position within the KTEU Labor with the Council on Aging Department, with an anticipated start date of November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, contingent with the terms in the offer letter.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
All right, next item.
Don, aye.
Sorry, I keep cutting you off, Don, I'm sorry.
He's moving right along.
Yeah.
It's okay.
He sounded sad.
It's okay.
Um, all right, update on Department of Public Works MOU, so it's not, not a DPW anymore, we're looking at an MOU. Sewer or wastewater commissioners met this evening, I attended that meeting, they looked at our draft MOU, made some suggested edits, nothing subs, nothing terribly substantial, just kind of rearranging some of the wording, which I think looks great, but in the spirit of, of everything that's being asked in that MOU, they were pretty much on board. The only issue was the, you know, using their staff for snow plowing, which has been, you know, a request, they had said years ago, they had hired a laborer who they were intending to lend to the town for snow plowing purposes when we have an event, but they're, they're understaffed, and during snowstorms, they have that laborer doing their own cleanup work around their facilities. So the term in the, in the MOU was instead of shall provide, at le, we're asking for them to provide, or shall provide at least one, preferably two people to assist with snow plowing, and they just changed shall to may.
That's the request. So we'll see, yeah, we'll see how that shakes out with the highway and...
And, and Water Department's meeting next week, I was planning on going to that meeting unless it coincides with our meeting, to see what kind of changes...
It should be earlier, I think they meet around four-thirty.
So it should be okay, I'll, I'll go to that meeting, see how that one goes, and then we'll get the feedback from, from everybody, we'll hash it out and get things signed, but they, they, they said that, you know, years ago, most of these people have been around for a long time, they said years ago, and especially when they did the first expansion of the sewer project, they thought that communication was really good, things worked well, they were able to coordinate traffic, work with the police department, so anything that we can do to get back to that and, and coordinate our projects, they seem perfectly willing to work towards that as well.
And the goal is that this is an agreeable document by all, right? So we can all work together.
Correct. Right, yeah, so they're, they're on board, they're very positive about it.
Great.
All right, we have approval of open session meeting minutes, September ninth and November fourth, any motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the open session meeting minutes for September ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Cal Pike, aye.
I know, he tried.
Don, aye.
There's a delay, you're never going to get it in time.
All right, is there anything?
I know.
George, any, any updates?
Well, as you guys probably know from my most, oh, sorry, as, as you probably already know from most of my annoying phone calls, I try to keep you guys updated in real time...
Yep.
Rather than coming back two weeks later, you know, and talking about it. So you're sort of up to date on everything we've been doing. The only thing I might make a very quick thing on is I, I am trying in conjunction with the finance director to maybe come up with a, let's say, some budget projections or whatever, which we can move forward with over the next several weeks. I, I understand, I will probably not be here in April or May when all this is, this is going to be taking place, but what I don't want to do is just leave it and then the next person comes in and they're three months behind, so...
Right.
You know, they can go from there, so I am trying to work towards that right at the moment, and the, the next person can do as they please with it, but at least there's something there, there's bones there to, to start off with, so work from there.
I plan on meeting with George on Thursday, and I promise not to make suggested reductions of lo, more than ten percent.
Oh, my God.
Well, remember, mine's my fifty thousand foot view of where it is at the moment, we're not quite into the weeds yet, but you know, it'll be something to start with anyway.
All right, any selectmen comments? Kim?
Uh, I did want to mention that the EV charging station vote that we took to move forward with that other vendor, based on our discussion in that meeting, he's actually following up with the facilities manager, as well as Derek Billnitzer, the finance committee member who has some knowledge about electronic, I mean, electric vehicles. So that may be coming back at a future meeting for us to look at that again, because what we had voted to move forward on might not be the best solution, and so there's some emails going on as well related to this, but the facilities director and assistant are working on this.
Right.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention, speaking of the facilities folks, their, their new sign is on the front of the townhouse, so I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, but, you know, Rob and Melissa worked on getting that up there, and it sounded terrifying, big ladders, but it's up there, it looks great, and if you have a, if you see them, please thank them for their, their efforts to get that up there, because it was, it's a big sign.
Yeah, sorry.
And it is high on the...
Awesome.
I should be getting, and you're figuring it out all very closely.
Thank you, sir.
Um, just an update on the regional school committee, regional, regionalization committee.
So we, we're set to date to meet tomorrow, we are going to have to do it in early January due to like posting agendas and whatnot. We did get approval to go all the way until twenty-twenty-six for our grant, so Kathleen helped us with that, and that should be moving forward with some subcommittees, and the Collins Center is on board, so all of that should get us some data to then present to the communities. And that's all I have for that.
Excellent.
What's the first Kingston three-hundredth event? Is it the forty-second brewery launch on December fourth, I think?
I don't know.
Okay, I think, so there's a...
I know the gala is coming up, they're selling tickets for that.
On the rec website?
On the rec website.
Okay. Because I did look, and I did not find it when I was looking, but perhaps it was earlier, maybe I was too early.
You might, please check out the website for events, Kingston three-hundredth anniversary is twenty-twenty-six, so the three-hundredth committee has been working very diligently
to create a very festive year with lots of events, so...
Yeah, there's a whole calendar of events, so I'll double-check and make sure, but the tickets are going to be sold on the recreation website.
I think the first thing is the...
I think you might be right, the brewery.
Forty-second brewery, on December fourth, but check the website to be sure.
Okay, got it.
Carl, do you have anything?
Thank you.
I'm good now.
Don, do you have anything?
I am good.
You gotta wait for the delay.
All right, um, so our next regular meeting is actually not December second, but we have one next week on the twenty-fifth, we will be posting it.
Poor Tricia, she's like, great, when is that?
I sent, I sent an email today. Yeah, it's not posted yet, but it will be posted.
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, so we have, the TA search committee has a finalist that, that is going to be brought forward before the board, and we're aiming for next Tuesday at five-thirty. So we just need to get that posting.
Do you, can I ask for the name?
Not yet.
It will, it will...
It was a good ask, though, I like it.
So, so names have to be published on the agenda.
Yeah, they will be.